Welcome, everybody, to our board meeting. Tonight, we have a bunch of Rutherford County students who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's hope you'll stand.
(inaudible)
Good job, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Execute the programs wherever you're going to head. Okay, if you'll join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
For move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Consent agenda.
So moved.
Discussion? We discussed all these items last night at our work session, so if it looks like we're moving quickly, we are. And plus, we think that we want to get to the spotlight, which I guess we should vote on this one, though, first, shouldn't we? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Now, we're ready for our spotlight.
We have a spotlight on education night, and it's Student Art Showcase, celebration of National Student Art Month. Student artwork is on display at the Board of Education. The artwork is representative of the 45 schools and K-12 students in our system. We started recognizing artwork about six or seven years ago. Ms. Barnes came up with the idea. She's Assistant Superintendent, Elementary Principal. Mr. Odom is. I'm an former elementary principal. And we've really missed the artwork. And I must say that the artwork over the past five or six years has gotten steadily better. I mean, some of the stuff that's displayed out there today is incredible. So good, in fact, I can't even describe it. But anyway, that said, I want to thank all you guys. I see a lot of the principals in the back. I appreciate you being here. If you're a principal in Rutherford County, raise your hand, please. Got all those guys showed up. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
And if you're an art teacher in Rutherford County, would you stand up? All right, good job, guys. And now, I'll turn it over to Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Gill and board members. This is always one of our highlights, to bring in the students who create this fantastic artwork and to present them to the board for being selected at their school level to display their artwork here in the central office for a period of one year. And we have been doing this for six years now. Each year, we collect a new piece of art, and we recycle the other piece back to the school to go back to the owner, so that they can proudly display it in their home when it gets back in their hands. So the group that's up here today will stay on display for a year, and we'll start this process again next December. I do want to thank the teachers for always cooperating and joining in on this adventure. I know it's a lot of work to make a selection of one or two pieces of art from a school of a thousand and try to pick out the piece that comes up here to us. So we appreciate their assistance, and we certainly appreciate the students' creativity and artistic ability when they provide us with a piece of artwork to have on display here. When we take it down in our halls, they're just as bare and dull, and people that work in this office will come in and say, "When are you going to bring in the new artwork?" And they really get excited when it comes back in, and they can tour and see what we have new for the year. So with that said, we are going to introduce the students who have this artwork on display this year. And I'll call them one at a time and name them by their name and their school. And I ask you to come forward and stand across the front of the room, in front of the board members' tables, and face the front. Remember, you're on TV, so smile and look nice. And if you will, if you're a taller student, help us to keep the younger, shorter students in front of you, and that puts everybody in view of the camera and the audience for everyone. And also, parents, I know you want to take pictures, and that's fine. We'll try to hold them just for a second when they get up there, if you need to snap a quick picture. And at the end, Mr. Evans will do a group photo that we'll send to the Daily News Journal, and we'll also put it on our website. So with that said, I'll go ahead and begin. From Barfield Elementary School, Eli Ward, 4th grade. And I'll ask that we hold our applause, if you don't mind, until the very end. Eli, you take center stage. How about that? Right there in front. Very good. From Blackman Elementary, Jeffrey Scarvell. From Blackman High School, Jonathan Ruiz. From Blackman High School, Christine Lisco and Julie Porter. From Blackman Middle School, Summer Spencer. I'm sorry, 7th grade. The Blackman High Schools were 12th and 11th grades. My apologies. From Browns Chapel Elementary, Luke Buckley, 5th grade. From Buchanan Elementary, Grace Hill, 1st grade, and Ethan Shiyav, 4th grade. And I apologize if I don't pronounce the names correctly. From Cedar Grove Elementary, Nubia Rodriguez, 2nd grade. From Central Magnet, Rachel Woods, 9th grade, and Mackenzie White, 10th grade, and John Midgley, 8th grade. From Christiana Elementary School, Mallory Brandon, 5th grade. From Christiana Middle School, Erin Coleman, 6th grade, and Claire Keith, 6th grade. From David Urie Elementary, Morgan Mueller, 4th grade. From Eagle Bowl School, we have Nellie Schwartz, 11th grade, Miranda Ricks, 6th grade, and Carissa Curtis, 3rd grade. While they're coming up, some of the schools that have different grade levels have additional pieces of art that are submitted to us. From Homer Pitterd Campus School, Isaac Hollis. Isaac, why don't you come on down and start this way, okay? From John Coleman, Jason Watkins, 4th grade. Thank you. From Kittrell Elementary, Alec Munpanthavong, 4th grade. From Last Cassus Elementary, Madeline Grisham, 4th grade. Very good. From Laverne High School, Julie Blair, 12th grade. From Laverne Lake Elementary, Skylar Fitzgerald, 3rd grade. Skylar, come on down on this end. Thank you. From Laverne Middle School, Monica Arias, 7th grade. From Laverne Primary School, Riley Allison, 1st grade. From McFadden School, William Harris, 2nd grade. From Oakland High School, thank you. Amanda Kiltika, 12th grade, and Alex Marsh, 12th grade. From Oakland Middle School, Morgan Wilcoxen, 8th grade. And Faith Ada, 7th grade, and Karina Marelli, 7th grade. From Riverdale High School, Kelsey Hannah, 10th grade. Ally Crabtree, 12th grade. Hannah Brewer, 12th grade. Abby Bell, 12th grade, and Krista Haislett, 12th grade. And some of these students did joint work together on a particular project, from what I understand. Thank you. Y'all may want to stand behind some of the younger students, if you'd like to do that, too. From Rock Springs Elementary, Caitlin Bickford, 2nd grade. Okay, Caitlin, come on up here in the front, and let's stand in front of the taller students, okay? From Rock Springs Middle School, Jenna Graves, 8th grade. From Rock Springs Middle School, Sierra Dobbins, 8th grade. Okay, Sierra, if you want to jump in here and stand behind one of these other students, that works. Thank you. Rockville Elementary, Haley Ray, 2nd grade. Rockville Middle School, Edgar Galvin, 8th grade. Roy Waldron Elementary School, Ciamara Torres, 2nd grade. Jump up here in front of somebody. Thank you. From Siegel High School, Molly Underwood, 12th grade. From Siegel Middle School, Karuko Kato, 7th grade. If you want to get behind one of these students right here, so it's okay. Thank you. From Smyrna Elementary, Alyssa Richardson, 1st grade. There you go. From Smyrna High School, Iria Keller, 10th grade. From Smyrna High School, Anna Emilia Paneta, 12th grade. From Smyrna Middle School, Amy McCullough, 7th grade. From Smyrna Primary School, Cameron Henderson, 5th grade. From Stewart's Creek Elementary School, Ella Hasty, 1st grade. Okay, jump up both there in the front. There you go. From Stewart's Creek Middle School, Haley Villarreal, 8th grade. From Stewart'sboro Elementary School, Sidney Richardson, 2nd grade. Michael Kentu, 5th grade, and Jonathan Leath, 2nd grade. That's fine. Just stand right there in the front and work your way into a little spot. We'll make sure we see everybody. Thank you. From Thurmond Francis Academy, Keleon Waldron, and Toyin Adogin, 8th grade, and Keleon, excuse me, is 2nd grade. Come on out here in the front. Let me find somebody to stand in front of. There you go. Okay. From Walter Hill Elementary, Bailey Cheryl, 5th grade. From Whitworth Buchanan Middle School, Danielle Rajvong, 7th grade, and Kayla Swedberg, 8th grade. There you go. Thank you, ladies. From Wilson Elementary, Jack Brewer, 2nd grade. All right, Jack, put yourself right in there somewhere. And from Wilson Elementary, Brayden D. Giacomo, 5th grade. So we would like to congratulate all of these student artists. Would you please give them a round of applause? Once again, we are extremely proud of your accomplishments, and thank you for sharing your artwork and creativity with all of us here. Now, as you know, all of the artwork is on display throughout the building and the hallways, and in just a moment, we're going to dismiss you students to the front lobby. And Mr. Evans, right here, is going to meet you out there and get a group photo, rather than do it in here. He'll put you in the lobby. And then, parents will dismiss you to go out and tour the building, and we'll give you a few minutes to vacate the boardroom, and then that way, you'll have free reign to tour.
Yeah, thank you all for coming so much. Like Ms. Barnes said, this is one of our favorite meetings of the year. We get to see the kids and their families and the great art, so thanks for taking the time to come out today.
Okay.
Students going to the lobby?
So students, we'll let you go first, if you will. We'll let you start leading them out. Students, we'll go out that way. You guys go out to the lobby, and your parents will come out right behind you. We're going to get a picture of you in the lobby, okay? All right.
Now, parents, you're welcome to stay for this board meeting.
We'll let all the students get out. We won't let them go anywhere. We'll keep up there. Okay, parents, thank you all very much for being here this evening. We appreciate your attendance and support. Thank you.
Where you going to go to?
I'm sure the chairman would make that imperative almost. The chairman? Yes, Mr. Trump. Okay. Oh, the man with the big hair. Well, you know, I tell you what, we have had just in the last year or so. Rachel wants to wear shorts. She wants to wear the shorts. And nothing, all the jeans that they make are like, localized. You gotta have the fabric. She goes to circle. I mean, that's the age when I get all concerned about what I'm wearing. It's wearing what?
Sir, are you behind us?
I'll be okay with that. Yeah, I think it'll sell right through. I'm sort of sad we... Well, you know, when we did that survey, that's exactly what we found. And then, then we find that we had to pay for the... Mine had to pay for the uniform. Yeah, right. It's not worth a reelection without a little need for shaking the ass off. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's see, where are we? We are ready for B.
Okay, 6B. Update on mobile health clinics. Kath Farrell and Tim Glover will report on the partnership between Rutherford County Schools and the Health Outreach Program Mobile Health Unit.
And it's just me by myself. What a great night to be here. And I have to say, I'm a Riverdale Warrior alumni, so what a fantastic night to be here. And to pay homage to March Madness a little bit, from that perspective, and then as a Hoosier, born and raised a Hoosier, the little tag on my email signature is Never Mistake Activity for Achievement. John Wooden is who said that, and I feel like this collaboration really reflects that. I'm going to introduce and recognize some people and share some numbers with you, but I want you to understand that in those numbers are real people and real stories, and we appreciate the opportunity to make a difference. We appreciate Mr. Gill. We wanted to be on the agenda one last time during his tenure to say thank you for embracing us and for encouraging this program from the top down. Under your direction, your principals have embraced us. Everybody on the staff has embraced us. Central Office has been fantastic, and without that, we wouldn't be able to serve these families. So we really do appreciate you. Kim Snell, Karen Madder, and Sarah Delbridge, those three women are fantastic in their respective roles, and without them, we wouldn't be able to do anything. Sarah does a fantastic job with the nurses and really connects our information and us with those folks. We do a great job of trying to figure out how can we best support their work. Right now, transitioning into that summertime schedule, we'll serve anybody, but we're really focused on those 7th graders, the rising 7th graders, with that immunization compliance, the additional 7th grade immunization requirements. In conversations with Sarah and her team, we're going to make a point to be at virtually every single middle school through the course of the rest of the spring and then the summer, and then we'll run three full days that first week of school, trying to make sure that you all don't have to send home any children who are not compliant in terms of those immunizations. Karen Madder is over the guidance counselors, and we have so appreciated her work. I think one of the most unique things that we do on the mobile is the mental health services, bringing those sort of out of the building and in a very non-threatening way to the schools to serve the families and serve the children. And we've had some crisis calls this year, and we've had some just what seems simple but is so traumatic for an elementary, middle school, or high school child. So we appreciate the opportunity to work with her and her folks under her leadership, and of course, Kim Snell. You know, I could talk about Kim for such a long time, but Kim really has connected us with so many different groups. Kim and I worked together before I came into this role, so I knew a lot about her work. I came into this role from United Way, so had her stats and quoted those to the community for many years before this partnership, and am so thankful to be in a role where we can hopefully really make a meaningful difference to the folks that she serves as well. And some of you all know Jenny Strasser. I need to introduce her. She's the pediatric nurse practitioner with the Primary Care &amp; Hope Clinic that is on that mobile health unit, and I wish that you all could see what I see. I wish you could see her interact with those families and interact with those children. And I think for us, what we're able to do is intervene right on the spot, but many of those families end up with a permanent medical home, and that's our goal, and it's with Jenny, and it's at the Primary Care &amp; Hope Clinic. Through this collaboration, just in a semester, we touched 1,603 individuals. 1,603. That's a pretty significant number, considering that we run four days a week. Some days, we only run four hours in a day. We have two Murfreesboro City School locations, two Rutherford County School locations. Smyrna Middle and Laverne Middle are the two on the north end. When we're at John Pitterd, we do a lot of work with Oakland Middle School and Oakland High School on that road. When we're at Bradley, now, we'll serve anybody, anywhere, but we do a lot of work with Holloway, and that has been a really neat partnership. I think we did almost every sports physical for the boys' football team and the boys' soccer team, and through grants, we have the ability to pay for those. And in our opinion, no child should be left out of an athletic event because they can't afford to get that sports physical that they need. I'll leave you with two stories. We've served, we believe, all 45 schools, by the way, have had referrals of some sort from all 45 schools in the district. One of the most powerful for me at the very beginning was from the nurse at Siegel High School, who, when she called me about a child, said, "You know, with our demographics, I listened to you, and I was so excited to learn about this partnership, but we weren't really sure if we would utilize your services. But I have a child, and I have a situation, and I'm not really sure where else to go." So we were able, with Jenny, to serve that child, and it was really neat to kind of walk him through. I wish I could tell you the specifics, but I can't. But to walk him through that situation and then see an outcome for him and for that family, and for the nurse there to feel like she has a resource. We also will do PR events. The month of January was Healer's Month, so Middle Tennessee Medical Center did a couple of events. The mobile health unit went out. We love to do those events because it allows us to connect to families. So we're at the Discovery Center, and we think we're going to have a few folks tour the unit. You know, we'll play with some kids. It'll be a great day. But we had a couple of families from the Smyrna area. It was a free day, half-price admission. Had a couple of families from the Smyrna area that came down, got into a pretty detailed conversation with the grandmother and the parents, ended up scheduling an intake on the mobile because they can walk to our Smyrna location. Scheduled an intake for the Guidance Center for the parents, by the way, not for the child on the mobile unit. And then, when they got there, did that process, but realized there were some underlying health issues as well, so we were able to connect them back into the St. Louis Clinic, which is MTMC's new clinic that serves the uninsured. You know, that's what this is all about. We want to serve your kids, but those kids go home at night, and we want to make sure that we help promote a healthy community. So thank you, guys. Do you have any questions for me at all?
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions? This is a great program, and we appreciate the work of you and your colleagues.
Thank you. We're looking forward to another good year, so thank you all.
Thanks. Okay, I don't believe we have any visitors signed up to speak, so we did number eight last night, so number nine.
Special course request. Laverne High School's requested approval to submit to the state an additional special course offering for 2012-2013 school year. Course is Surveys of Popular American Culture, a one-half English department offering designed for seniors. Course is modeled after the same successful course at Smyrna High School, and recommend that you approve Laverne High School making application for a new special course titled Surveys of Popular American Culture for English Focus.
For move. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Number 10.
10, we said last night we're going to take off the agenda, but I will tell you that I told Mr. McLeod today that we'll get Mr. Nolan and the vendor that would be responsible for raising funds to get them in here and talk to them and make sure that we're all in our, you know, in our safe zone with respect to whether we ought to proceed with that. And it could be that it'll be back on the agenda next time.
Okay. 11.
Walking track at Browns Chapel Elementary School. Principal Kelly Goose Tree has requested permission to construct a 200-meter walking track at Browns Chapel Elementary School. It will be located on the south side of the school, adjacent to the playground, and constructed of pervious concrete. MTSU Concrete Industry Management students will do the construction. Funding will be provided by the PTO, MTSU, and Coordinated School Health at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board.
Some... Second.
Something wrong? I don't know. Is something wrong?
No, we were just trying to scroll. Sorry.
I'm sorry, did we get a motion? We did. And a second? So I think we're ready to roll. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Anything more to say on B?
The only thing I'll say on B is that I know, first of all, we're looking for ways to build these guys' fields at an inexpensive price, if at all possible. I mean, I think they deserve it, and I know it'd be a hard sell to the county commission, but I'd still like to get them fields, and I'll never apologize for doing what I think's right for kids, so I didn't mean to mislead the board. I don't ever really remember saying we wouldn't pursue athletics at school, but that's a long time ago. We're all pretty old folks, and we kind of maybe have selective memory, but at any rate, we'll keep pursuing some options on that.
So you'll let us know. I would...
Yeah.
I agree with you. I don't want to see us just drop this. Obviously, we can't spend a million dollars, but I'd like to see some sort of resolution reached. C.
Stewart's Creek. In front of you is a packet, a three-page packet, four-page packet, and actually, I think it would behoove all of us, if I started on the back page, would basically give you a quick description on what we have discussed and what we're going to recommend or what we're suggesting, be the protocol for zoning, and then we'll come back and talk about the personnel, when we'll hire them, who will hire them, and if there's any questions for funding, we can do that at that time. Anyway, the back page, we anticipate from start to finish, 82 days for zoning Stewart's Creek High School. Now, bear in mind that in advance of that, we're behind the scenes, working on shaving, working on zoning, and working on socioeconomic zoning, et cetera. But we also are in a little bit of a dilemma in that we got at least two board members that'll be leaving, and two board members are coming on, and I don't... I know Mr. Hodges and Mr. Kelly...
Is something wrong?
No, we're just trying to scroll through.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, did we get, uh, a motion? We did. And a second?
Second.
So, I think we're ready to roll. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Anything more to say on B?
Uh, the only thing I'll say on B is that, uh, I, uh, I know, first of all, we're looking for ways to build these guys' fields at an inexpensive price, if at all possible. I mean, I think they deserve it. Uh, and I know it'd be a hard sell to the county commission, but I'd still like to get them fields. And I, I'll never apologize for doing what I think's right for kids. So, I, I didn't mean to mislead the board. Uh, I, I don't ever really remember saying we wouldn't pursue athletics at school, but that's a long time ago. We're all pretty old folks, and we kinda maybe have selective memory. But at any rate, uh, we, we'll keep pursuing some options on that.
So, you'll let us know. I, I would, I agree with you. I don't wanna see us just drop this. Obviously, we can't spend a million dollars, but I'd like to see some sort of resolution reached. Uh, C.
Stewart's Creek. In front of you is a packet, uh, three-page packet, four-page packet. And actually, I think it would behoove all of us, if I started on the back page, would basically, uh, give you a quick description on what we, uh, what we have discussed and what we're going to recommend or what we're suggesting. Uh, be the protocol for zoning, and then we'll come back and talk about the personnel, uh, when we'll hire them, who will hire them, and if there's any questions for funding, we can do that at that time. Uh, anyway, the back page, we anticipate from start to finish eighty-two days for zoning Stewart's Creek High School. Now, bear in mind that in advance of that, we're behind the scenes, working on, uh, shaving, working on zoning, and working on, uh, socioeconomic, economics, zoning, et cetera. But we also are in a little bit of a dilemma in that we got at least two board members that'll be leaving, and two board members are coming on. And I don't, I know Mr. Hodges and Mr. Kelly, they too are up for elections, so it potentially, it could be four, I suppose. So, we thought it would be good if, if we at least expose you guys to what our plan is. At the same time, let the new folks, when they got in here, let them jump in fast, because ultimately, they're gonna have to make the decision. So, what we thought we would do, we would bring, while you folks are still on the board, while the board is intact, on, on eight thirteen two thousand twelve, we would bring a proposed plan to the board for review. That would be the, uh, the original plan. Now, obviously, there'll be a, uh, I would presume, an incredible amount of discussion. So, we dedicated, and at the same time, we will give, we will know by then who the new board members will be too. They'll get a copy of what the proposed plan is, and if there's a need to hold subsequent meetings with those new folks and go over stuff, I will do that during the month of August, too. But we thought we'd first discuss the plan on nine five two thousand twelve and give the board time to digest what's, uh, been discussed, come back for a second meeting. And obviously, if there's a need for a special call meeting or more meetings, we can hold those too. But the second board meeting to discuss the plan will be on nine seventeen two thousand twelve. Members, if I'm correct, we typically have a lot of discussion, and people will wanna know about their, a certain neighborhood, and what do you think about this? Can you get some answers on with respect to the free reduced population? What about this road? Uh, so, we'll hold that second meeting on nine seventeen. Now, again, there's a potential there for additional meetings pursuant to what the board decides. Now, we've got four separate public hearings scheduled, and those would be scheduled, uh, would be set. First one, Blackman High School on, uh, October the first two thousand twelve. The second one, about a week later, at Riverdale High School. The next one, uh, would be at Smyrna High School on ten twenty-three, and the next one at Laverne High School on ten thirty. Now, we kinda staggered those because we knew there'd be some board meetings in there, too. All right, now, after those meetings, we set up two follow-up meetings for the board to discuss what's discussed at the public hearings, see if there are any needed changes. And then there'd be a fourth meeting that we set, and again, there's no magic number. We thought this is, would be about appropriate, uh, for eleven twenty. And then the board would need to finalize the plan by twelve four two thousand twelve, because the principal and others would be taking office, uh, would be assuming their position sometime in very early January. And, uh, they'll have a pretty mammoth job in, in front of them with respect to hiring and transferring personnel, hiring coaches, inventorying the supplies that come in, visiting schools, uh, uh... But that's kind of where we, where we are with respect to the zoning plan. Now, if there are no questions on that, we've, we've used, are there?
Are there any questions on the schedule? Aaron?
Having never been through it before, is this a typical proven? We've done something similar to this in the past, and it's shown to be correct?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. I mean, we tip for probably more meeting date schedule, since it involves four schools and a larger number of, uh, students. But, yeah, that's, that's generally the timeframe. I mean, it does put us in a bit of a sticky wicket with respect to, uh, you know, two different boards we'll be working with. So, uh, I mean, I, I think that's, that gives you ample time.
Okay. I think it's a good schedule. You give the old board at least a chance to talk about it, but then most of the work is done by the new board, as it should be, because they can be the ones voting.
Right.
So, um, and there's plenty of public meetings, so that's a good too. Give people a chance to have their say, especially since I won't be there. Any, any questions on, on this schedule? Go ahead, thank you.
Now, what we tried to do for personnel was basically use, uh, Segal High School as a kind of a template for doing that. And Ms. Barnes will, she'll go over those positions out and about and tell you how long they'll be employed before they actually open the school, et cetera.
Hey, Mr. Gill. If you look at the third page back, you'll see a, a document from Mr. Sandvig, and that's the, uh, Rutherford County School startup positions for Stewart, Stewart's Creek High School from the budget perspective. So, you can kind of see how many days are allocated for the half of the year from January until the school actually opens. And I've used those figures as a basis for personnel issues on the first two pages. I just wanted you to reference that so you'd know how we came up with these positions and numbers. Um, the intent is in October of this year to post the principal's position, make that recommendation, and name the new principal. And then in November, that principal will be able to post and recommend his or her secretary's position, so that in January, both the principal and the school secretary start at the same time in that capacity. Then, during the month of January, we'll be able to identify the number of teacher transfers from each of the sending schools based on the rezoning process, because we'll know how many students are leaving and approximately how many teachers will have to pull from each school.
Okay, so, you're gonna, that figure will be limited from any one school, right? Based on the number of students?
Correct. We'll identify, if the school has to lose three hundred students, then we'll calculate to determine how many teachers that equates to. But what we'll do, once, once all that is identified from each school, then we set, set up a protocol for, for tracking these transfers, and we make sure that no one school loses a large number of experienced teachers, teachers in a particular core area. We try to make it spread across the girth of all the schools and who loses what into that capacity. And that's gonna be really important.
And, and you know, and another thing, Paula, we try to make sure that both, I mean, you're never gonna make all the principals happy, but you try to at least give them input with respect to allowing them to transfer. Because like, you know, if Richard's losing, uh, uh, folks to Miss Gillian back there, we don't want him to take all those good teachers without Richard. I say good teachers, all those experienced teachers, people that have high evaluations, without Richard having some input. So, we've always been conscientious of that.
We try to be very careful. We get a blend of all the teachers that have to move. We know we're gonna have to lose a specific number from each school, but within that number, we try to have a blend of, of teacher capacities.
Because the, I don't wanna open up an old wound here, but the, the public perception when Segal opened was that there was wholesale movement of teachers out of Oakland, and, and I think we all wanna avoid that this time. It sounds like you've got something in place to, to do that.
It's not the more public perception.
Probably reality, huh? Is that what you're saying? I was trying to be diplomatic, but, yeah.
And another step we'll put in place is the new principal and then the four sending principals. We'll have a meeting up here with HR, the director of schools, and we'll sit down and talk about this procedure and make sure everyone is well aware that this is what we're gonna track, that, that we shouldn't lose a, a large number of any particular position. And we'll make sure that we don't rob Peter to pay Paul, if you will. So, we're gonna track all of that. Uh, and then we'll set a date to go to each school and meet with the certified staff there to explain this procedure to them and how the transfer is going to work for that first group of positions that have to be filled at that school. In February, or excuse me, in January also, the new principal will be able to post and recommend for hire two assistant principals and two school counselors. And then in February, those four people will begin. And, Mr. Gill, if you do wanna talk about the reason for doing that so early?
Well, I mean, obviously, you're starting student schedules, you're starting teacher schedules. There's a great amount of interviewing to be done. A lot of times, uh, for new positions, assistant principals help with that. Equipment's coming in, there'll be inventory issues, they'll be hiring coaches for all their sports. Uh, they'll be, uh, you know, ordering uniforms for ball teams. I mean, it's just a, it's just a tremendous undertaking. And, uh, I think those people will be extremely busy, trust me.
So, again, in February, then we'll be meeting with those certified staff at each school, again, talk about that transfer procedure, make sure everybody understands what to do. And we'll set up an internal transfer that's on our online programs, that only internal candidates from those four schools can actually apply for the positions that that new principal posts for those, for that school in that transfer-allocated number of positions. We'll get that done first before we open up any remaining positions to the general public. Okay? Uh, in February and March, we'll back up in February, we'll be able to post the attendance clerk for that school, and then that person will begin in the February and March area, and he will also be posting a lead custodian for the school at that time, because by then, they'll be getting close to having access to at least sections of the school to be able to accept equipment, materials, and things like that. Uh, sometime in March, April, we'll start looking at classified positions to determine if positions have to be transferred. Uh, Mr. Blair in food service will look at that. Mr. Sandvig and Mr. Clardy will look at custodian positions. Some of that may be affected, so we'll talk to that staff and make sure everybody understands the transfer procedures if we have to move anyone. Now, if not, transfers are always an option for any employees if they want to get into new positions that are posted. And then, um, we'll meet with those classified staff if transfers are mandated based on numbers and explain that process to them. Uh, the lead custodian, again, will start sometime in March, April, and then we've built in extra days for the school librarian to work twenty days before school starts pending arrival of the textbooks or the library books at that school. So, they'll have time to go into the library and set up all of that information there.
Questions?
Questions?
As far as all the interviewing, you know, prior to having the office area on the campus, is there, is there room here to do that?
Well, what, what our plan is to do, I mean, we've done it before with like, if there's just a new principal for a new elementary school or something, we put them in an office back here, but we'll probably, uh, put them in a location at adult ed where they can have their entire team out there. We may have to do some shuffling around, but, you know, we got tight quarters down here now. Every office, every inch of every building is in use, so that's the plan. We'll put them out there.
And, and oftentimes, when they start interviewing at the school sites for those mandated transfers, the principal and the team might go to that school, and the sending principal allows them some space in the building to hold their interviews there. So, it makes, they work, they work all that out.
Other questions for Ms. Barnes?
Is, uh, two assistant principals and two guidance counselors, is that opening staff? Will that be full staff, or will there be additional ones that are?
There should be four assistant principals and four guidance counselors when it's all said and done, but these will be the initial hires to get things moving and through this initial process.
I think every high school has four.
Four.
And, and that's really the, kind of brings us in compliance with what the old SAC standards were. If you ask them, that's not enough.
Sure. Yeah. The reason for having, uh, two assistant principals and two guidance counselors as opposed to four assistant principals on staff is the student scheduling aspect of preparation, am I right?
Uh, part of scheduling, although, a lot of things, yeah, student schedules, they'll work with student schedules. There'll be some visitations to other schools to meet with students, to meet with parents. It's just, uh, kind of gives you a, a broad, uh, spectrum of things that you can do there. Uh, I would say, and not that it's really influenced it, but it's a little bit cheaper to hire the counselors than assistant principals do. But, uh, we just think they're all needed. Some of them will work with a attendance, uh, person for, uh, EIS with scheduling of kids, information's coming in. Uh, that's just kind of, it's evolved to that over the years.
Okay. Uh, also, um, educational assistants are not specifically highlighted under the, uh, classified people. Will there be an opportunity for transfer there?
It really depends on the students that are moved from those sending schools and in what capacity they are. At the high schools, typically, you have special education, educational assistance. So, it depends on if those special ed students are moved with rezoning and if there is a loss of numbers at one school that need to go to another school. So, that'll all come up a little bit later.
Other questions? Tom?
With, uh, the new method of dealing with teachers of the collaboration, how is this going to fit into that, or does it?
It doesn't at all. It's not one of the items that we will talk about in collaborative conferencing.
Those items are, are now spelled out?
Correct. Correct. And transfers is not one of those items that can be discussed.
This is no gray area for this to be?
No, sir. None whatsoever.
Okay. Other questions? Well, thank you for that report. That's very important. Sounds like we got a good plan in place. Number twelve.
Twelve A payout for vacation days for the director. Uh, after Mr. Watson's retirement, county order requesting board approval in the future for the director's vacation payout. Any twelve-month employee can finish a school year with up to sixty-six unused vacation days and budget amendments to fund these payouts when a staff member retires for routine item most years. Recommend that you approve pay the director of schools for up to sixty-six of the unused vacation days upon retirement.
So move.
No.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
B, general purpose school budget amendment, certified. This amendment real allocates one hundred seventy-four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars in already budgeted certified staff pay and nine thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars in related benefits. No new positions or funding is being added. The change in light item seventy-two three twenty-one-one covers, uh, Mr. Gill's vacation payout. The overlap in two weeks, the board has mentioned, if that's necessary. The other changes are all related to the actual staff we now have in place as opposed to who was in place when the budget was prepared. And recommend that you amend one hundred seventy-four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars in already budgeted certified staff pay and ninety-two hundred and thirty-one dollars of related benefits as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is adopted.
Classified. This amendment real allocates forty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars in already budgeted classified staff pay and forty-one hundred and ninety-four dollars in related benefits. No new positions or funding is being added. The eighteen thousand five hundred dollars change between light item seventy-one two hundred dash one sixty-three and seventy-three four hundred dash one sixty-three corrects the coding for preschool educational assistant. The other changes are all related to the actual staff we now have in place as opposed to who was in place when the budget was prepared. Recommend that you amend forty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars in already budgeted classified staff pay and forty-one hundred and ninety-four dollars in related benefits as presented.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
Transportation. Per section eight of the bus contract, which covers the signability of a contract from a contract holder to another individual, the transportation department has received a request from Ms. Peggy Jernigan, contractor of bus eleven, and Donald Jernigan, her husband, dated March seventh, two thousand twelve. Their request in bus eleven be assigned to Jay Jernigan, their son, and the driver of bus eleven. Jay Jernigan has been driving the bus for the past two years and provides the maintenance. Mrs. Jernigan has been a bus provider for the Rutherford County Schools for twenty-three years, but she is no longer able to maintain this bus contract due to health issues. Letter requesting the bus contract be transferred to Jay Jernigan effective the last day of school year is provided. Recommend that you approve the contract for bus eleven to be transferred from Peggy Jernigan to Jay Jernigan effective the last day of the school year.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
Student discipline, student discipline appeal. Board has been requested to review the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve decision of the Disciplinary Hearing Authority to uphold the remandment of a student from Segal Middle School to Daniel McKee Alternative School. This review is pursuant to the provisions of policy six point three zero nine the board made. A, affirm the decision of the DHA. B, overturn the decision of the DHA. C, modify the decision to a lesser penalty. D, grant a second hearing, which will be before the board, or E, deny request for a board hearing.
Move to affirm the decision of the DHA.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
We'll do sixteen.
Yeah, let's do general discussion.
We'll meet at Riverdale.
Yeah, uh, one thing I think we, we, we forgot last night, or may have been not, not appropriate, I guess, is to congratulate, uh, Riverdale girls', uh, basketball team on state championship. And, uh, hopefully, in future meetings, Mr. Gill, have them come join us.
We will. Ms. Michael, if you can remember, let's call Mr. Nolan tomorrow and ask him, invite him to the next board meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Terry. That's quite an achievement, so, appreciate you mentioning that. Especially since you're an Oakland graduate. That's pretty big of you. Should've been me, the Riverdale graduate.
That was, that was hard to get out.
If we're, uh, extending that invitation, uh, certainly wanna congratulate the, uh, bowling state champion from Laverne as well. I think we're, uh, extending that invitation. Uh, certainly wanna congratulate the, uh, bowling state champion from Laverne as well, and if we could include them, the, in that invitation.
Yeah, that's a good point. Did, I think, I know an individual girl won it. Did the team win it or just the girl?
Just the individual.
Yeah. Yeah, I read that. There was an article in the paper about her. There's a really good article.
Other general discussion.
I'd like to ask that, uh, board policy six point seven zero two be added to, uh, our next board review, uh, for policy. I think there's some revisions there that we could discuss, and, uh, I'll forward, uh, my comments to Ms. McLeod on that.
Okay. If I can find a pen, I'm gonna write down that number.
It's student clubs and organizations. Won't be hard to remember.
Well, Mr. Gill thinks that we're all old, and so may, it might be harder.
Yeah, thank you.
Says six point seven.
Six point seven oh two.
Okay, we will do that. Other general discussion. Okay. Let's go back to fifteen. We discussed this at some length last night, but here's another opportunity to ask any questions about the search or, um, I don't, I would doubt that anybody had a chance to, to actually produce additional questions. But if you did, that was a good time to discuss it. Okay, so just as a reminder, uh, the next time we'll meet will be, uh, twenty-seventh. So that'll be a big night. Uh, we'll have the, the recommendation from T S B A. We'll, uh, approve a set presumably of five finalists. Doesn't have to be that many. Uh, that's again, partly dependent on what they recommended, more dependent on what we wanna do. I, I don't think we wanna go beyond five. We have five days lined up for, for interviews. So we'll do that, uh, and we'll also finalize our questions. So that's on the twenty-seventh of March. Deadline for applications is the twenty-first, next Wednesday. So, I imagine we should be getting maybe a batch of applications via email Friday, Joyce. I think that's.
And then we'll get one.
Yeah, so we'll probably get two more sets of those.
The questions that, that have been provided to us certainly gives us an opportunity to deviate.
Yes.
And, and maybe go into a little more detail.
Right.
So, uh, without actually benefiting or, or causing a disadvantage for any applicant.
Right.
So, uh, there, I'm pleased with the, uh, with the generalization questions that we've been provided, so.
And I think what I plan to do anyway is, is think about issues that are more specific to our system or issues that I'm particularly interested in. Those are the questions that I'm gonna write. Because I agree, Wayne. I think this is a good set of starting questions dealing with sort of a general focus, but, um, so we'll discuss all those, um, we'll do more than discuss. We'll discuss and adopt the, the set of questions on the twenty-seventh. Again, as we said last night, if we have to come back for another night to do that, we will. I don't anticipate that, but we always have that right. Donald. Well, we talked some about that last night. I'm, I'm glad to do that and then let people ju- jump in to ask follow-up questions. I, I'll follow the will of the board on, on that.
I, I think it'd be the proper structure, so that's what I would favor too.
And I think Joyce did tell me after the meeting last night that that's how it's been done in the past, so.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Donald, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
I said, I, I, girl, I think you should leave.
Okay. I, I'm happy to do that if that. Um, so, so that's how we'll proceed. But I'll ask the, the, sort of the leadoff question, and we'll hear what the person says. And if you have, uh, follow-ups, then you'll jump in and ask those yourself. Okay?
And it is, it is an open meeting?
It is. We've invited them to televise it. I don't know if they'll actually do that or not. But it certainly is open. And public is more than welcome. Not, no, but we're the only ones who get to ask questions. We need to make that clear. But, um, if between now and the twenty-seventh, the public has some questions they want us to consider, I would, I'll be glad to take a look at them. I imagine you guys would too. But, uh, this is our decision, and yes, we wanna be quite careful to accept public input, but just understand that it's gonna be us. Anything else on the search? Okay, I think we are adjourned.